Well, thank you very much for that warm welcome and good evening to everybody who turned out tonight. I am Marsha Kramer and on behalf of CBS Two and WLNY-TV 1055, along with our partners here tonight, WCBS Radio 880, 10-10 Wins News, New York Daily News, the City University of New York, New York Immigration Coalition, and Common Cause New York, we would like to welcome you to our fourth in a series of Town Hall meetings. Joining me tonight on the panel, first of all, is Gillian Jorgensen, City Hall Bureau Chief of the New York Daily News.
Thanks, Marsha. Our coalition has been awarded the mayoral debates in the fall by the New York City Campaign Finance Board. In preparation for that, we want to hear the voices of real New Yorkers.
Thank you, Gillian. Also joining me on the panel tonight is Peter Haskell from WCBS News Radio 880.
And we are holding these meetings in all the five boroughs throughout the month of June. It's one way as New Yorkers, you can let your voice be heard, a forum where you can share your questions and concerns, and let us know what qualities you'd like to see in this year's candidates for mayor, comptroller, and public advocate.
And last but absolutely not least, Juliet Papa from 10-10 Wins News. Juliet?
And together as news and civic organizations committed to community engagement, we would like the issues raised to reflect the concerns of all of you, New Yorkers from every corner of our city, and that includes, of course, Harlem to Midland Beach, and Pallan Park to Astoria and Crown Heights. So, this is truly your floor and forum, and we are here to listen to you. Now, we will be recording your questions and concerns, and then we'll be sharing them with our viewers and listeners. And this Town Hall meeting is being streamed live on CBSNewYork.com, so anybody out there watching the stream, give us your questions. Back to you, Marsha.
Thank you, Juliet. Now, before we get started, we'd like to thank our gracious hosts here at Chambert and for that really warm welcome. Now, in the spirit of maximizing participation and making sure we can hear from as many of you as possible, we ask your cooperation with a few ground rules. If you have a question or a comment, please line up in front of the microphone stand, which is right here in front of us at the side of the stage. If you'd like to follow up, please keep your comments brief so that we don't run out of time and we can get to as many of you as possible. And if you have a comment you would like to make in Spanish, we will try to help you in translating for the rest of the audience. Also, if you don't have a chance to express yourself or your concerns this evening, or would like to do so afterwards, we are really happy to hear them on our respective social media pages, or you can leave written questions with our staff after the meeting. With that, let's get started, and if you'd like to ask a question, please come here to the microphone and we'll hear what you have to say. Good evening. Can you tell us your name and where you're from?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Charles, and I'm from the Bronx, but I do visit Harlem on many occasions.
And what's your question for the mayoral candidates?
My question for the mayoral candidates are, what are they going to do different than what the past mayors have done to really be supportive of the middle class, the seniors? We are in hardship when it comes to our rent, when it comes to ceiling rent or rollback rent. We are asking for the mayor to look at those issues because people are hurting right now, and I'm about to retire, but not retire because I'm too energetic, but I just do want people, I want those who are going to be in charge of supporting our livelihood for us to be able to live in the future peacefully, just like everyone else. I don't think that they want us to start living with them because it's very sad that we are afraid of having our roof ripped from over our heads.
So, you're saying that you want to ask them about what they're going to do for the forgotten middle class?
Forgotten middle class, homeless. Well, the homeless, they're getting their fair share because they have the opportunities right now, but in New York City housing, we used to actually have families move into those open spaces because they were in good standing in the community, but now it's for homeless, it's for veterans, which it was, it started out to be.
So, are you asking for rent rollbacks?
Rent rollback, rent freeze, all of the above.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person. Sir, thank you for coming tonight. Tell us your name and where you're from.
Sure. My name is Anderson Fieseme. I'm from Richmond Hill, Queens.
And what's your question for the mayoral candidates?
I would like two questions for the mayoral candidates. One, what will they do to repeal the Ertstat law? Hopefully, working with partners throughout the state where they do not have home rule to get home rule passed. It'd be great to have the city control its rent laws. And then, second, I'd love to increase civic engagement. Councilmember Danny Drum for the 25th Council District had introduced legislation in the last council session to possibly give green card holders the opportunity to vote, and I'd love to see what Tacoma Park did in Maryland and allow 16-year-olds to register and vote. Thank you for the great work.
Yeah, if I could just kind of pick your brain on the Ertstat law question, which that's a, that's like a deep cut of city law or state law that you referenced there. It obviously governs rent regulations, and it's handled by the state rather than the city. Do you think if the city was able to handle its own rent regulations, you might see more movement on those issues, or why do you want to see that repealed?
Totally, totally more movement. I believe the city of New York should control its housing, and so folks who live in Richmond Hill, or East New York, or Staten Island should not have a senator, state senator from Buffalo, impact the housing laws. So, we would love to see the 51 members of the city council and the mayor be in control of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see another person with a question. Come to the microphones.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and I'm from the Mingqun Center. Mingqun is a member of APA Voice, which is a coalition of 17 Asian-American organizations doing civic and voter engagement throughout the city. Asian-Americans comprise 13.5% of our city's population, and more than four, more than one in four Asians are living in poverty, yet during the past 10 years, organizations serving the Asian-American community only received 1.36% of public funding from our city government. And furthermore, although 16% of the city's seniors are Asian, the city's social service funding for seniors, only 2.7% of that funding went to programs focused on Asian seniors, and as a result, senior citizens are among the most heavily affected by this disparity in funding for Asian-American community organizations, many of which help low-income seniors find affordable housing. This process is especially difficult for Asian seniors because, one, the housing application process must be completed in English, and, two, in order to apply, they need to go to each housing complex separately and fill out separate applications, and, three, once they do make it through this process, oftentimes they have to wait from five to more than 15 years in order to find housing. So, my question is, how will the mayoral candidates ensure that the city provides timely, safe, and affordable housing access for all citizens, especially limited English proficient senior citizens?
The ground rules are the same for everybody. Why do you think there is this disparity?
So, I'm not 100% sure about why there's this disparity, but more than two in three Asian seniors are limited English proficient, and oftentimes, the lack of housing leads to overcrowding, and you can see that the results of that is that 17% of Asian seniors live in overcrowded households as opposed to 7% of non-Asian seniors. So, I think there's a clear disparity there.
Where do they generally go for help in either interpretation, interpreters, or translation, or do you think there's enough resources in that regard?
Well, I think there aren't enough resources. So, for example, Mingqun Center does offer help with translation, but we don't have the resources to offer help with senior housing registration, and because there isn't enough funding devoted to community-serving, community organizations serving Asian-Americans, as we know from the statistics, 1.36%, we think that there aren't enough of those resources for seniors.
So, are you also saying that you need more help with translation so that you can get more people and more outreach to help the community?
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person can come to the microphone. And if you'd like to start lining up, you're welcome to do that as well.
Good evening. Love your shoes, Ms. Kramer. My name is—
Thank you very much for noticing.
I got jokes.
And I like your flower.
Thank you. My name is Rochelle Thompson, and I'm a jazz vocalist here in the community, and I majored in Harlem and its writers in filmmaking from the University of Pittsburgh. So, I stand on ranks in Houston's ashes. My question to you, I have lived in Harlem for 32 years, and I'm going to court with the senior citizens who are 84 and younger, who are being displaced from our homes, who are being evicted for a dollar, who are being given buyouts of $2,000 or $3,000. It is absolutely unconscionable. That our government seems to not be helping us at all. We are people who want to pay our rent. I'm still waiting for my Ten of the Year Award. So, my question to you is, we need a program where we can own our apartments, not constantly going to court, and the court procedure becomes a payment procedure. Thank you.
Wait, wait, I want to ask you a question, if you don't mind. So, are you saying that these are landlords that are forcing you out, or is it the city that's forcing you out, or both?
Well, both, because my building used to be owned by the city. Now, it's owned by a private landlord. And I called you today and left you a beautiful message.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I just ask a question?
Yes.
Are you now looking for another place to live, and how is that going for you?
Let me be homegirl here. Hell, no. I love where I live. I'm not going anywhere else. It is my home.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If you could come to the microphone, love to hear what your name is and your question.
Hello. My name is June like the month, Moses like the Bible, and I do a lot of things, and throughout the evening, we're going to hear a lot about the myriad of problems that are going on here in the city and asking what the candidates might want to do about it.
Right.
But the one thing we are certain about is that crime has gone down.
Right.
And if we don't begin to take care of these problems, there's going to go right back to where it was when we were unhappy. Now, my question would be this, with all the changes that are coming from a federal level, and we are all certain that all these different pots of money, and a big pot of money comes from the federal government, what would the candidate put in place or think about doing to ensure that New York City becomes insulated, so that this way, if there's a hole, how do we fill it? And there's no plan coming from anybody running for dog catcher, toilet paper holder, whatever they're running for. No one has a plan. What's happening is very clear. People are very confused, and they have, we're very sure where our money is going. We're not sure where the protection is going to come from, and not one person on any level has begun to speak to it. So, I would appreciate it if y'all would ask each and every one of them, what is the plan? Because we are all at risk, and it will be the 70s again. I don't want, no one wants to go back to that here.
So, you're looking for like a financial emergency plan, like a Plan B?
What would be the economic plan? How do they plan on protecting us? Because we send our federal, we send our tax money everywhere, and I go and buy something at the store, my tax money goes elsewhere, to the state, to the federal government. But the bottom line is, not a lot of it comes back. Our schools are short-changed. Everything across, this young lady here, and her housing is short-changed. I'm a neighbor. I live in the historic 135th Street Houses right next door. That was built by black people, and we're looking at being displaced. So, when the federal government comes and cuts that money, because we are quite clear about what's going on, I really need to hear from someone, what is the plan? Because we can't keep running out in the street with signs. Okay, now what?
I've got a question for it. There's clearly no shortage of need. What are your priorities? Where do you want to see the money go if the city comes up with a plan?
Well, one, first of all, how do we stop the leakage? If you're going to not send us money, then how do we not send you money? Let's put some, seriously, let's start to put some pins in these things, because New York City has a humongous budget. We have a lot of money here. Does everybody really want to play that game with us? If New York and California go, no, thank you, now what? What does middle America, oh, the economic anxious people, what do they do when I say no, thank you? So, I'd like to know from anyone, not just mayoral, but any one of these candidates, from city, everybody, what do you plan on doing? Because the primaries coming, and black women, we vote. So, let's, I want to know what's happening.
But is it education? Is it policing? Is it housing? What is—
Policing is not the issue. Again, crime is down. That is a misnomer.
But are you concerned that this is going to change?
People like to buy in on that crime, and that's not real. The reality is, if people are out of their home and they're homeless, those homeless people, when they get frustrated, what are they going to do? Hit you over the head on the subway. When that person loses their job, and they can no longer find a job, and they cannot get to the next thing because there's no training, because the jobs that are out there don't match what they do, now that they're hungry, what are they going to do? They're going to steal your iPhone because they need Pampas or whatever. And then, the next group is, what's coming back? Crack's coming back. What's coming back? Heroin is back. And what are we doing? Cut, 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 cut. Now, where does this result? When the crime and everything goes up, who's the first person who's going to be demonized in all of this? It's going to be people who look like me, and I'm no longer standing for any of this. A lot of people aren't, this is going to be a dangerous summer if people do not have a plan. So, if no one is listening to me, God knows, I hope they're listening to you. So, please pose these questions, because it's not a game. We don't need to be adversaries, none of us in any of this.
Let me ask you this question. If the, if the plan involves cutting certain programs, would you be in favor of that?
What do you mean by cutting certain programs?
If the plan to deal with the cuts from Washington involve the city, the mayor of the city of New York having to cut certain programs, how would you feel about that?
I would say, let's cut the money we send to the federal government. What are we sending back? What do we say? We don't cut up here.
So, you're saying withhold taxes, withhold—
They're going to withhold money from us. So, we're a sanctuary city, and we protect our Latinx brothers and sisters. They're going to take our money. They're going to cut the funding. They're voting on that this week. So, now, what do we do? That's my point. You want to play hard, I got you. Let's shut it down. Let's circle wagons and see how y'all fare. Because the bottom line is, as New Yorkers, we are sick and tired of being sick and tired. I'm not standing for it. They're not standing for it. And I will not see a young people being demonized, because they're going to be the face of crime. They're going to be the face of the problem, and that's not fair to them. When we see what it is, and we refuse to do anything, but sit around and ta, ta, ta. Yeah, Twitter is very powerful. All these things are very powerful, but what are we going to do that's real, that we can touch, taste, and feel? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Man, tell me who you are and what your questions are. It's okay. You can hold it.
Hi, good evening. My name is May Lee. I am from Chinatown on the Lower East Side. I am the Executive Director of the Chinese Progressive Association, which is in the neighborhood down there. I'm also a member of the APA Voice, which you just heard about. In Chinatown, we actually registered a lot of new citizens to vote last year, and many of them were able to vote. So, my question is about immigration. You know, Chinatown and Lower East Side is still to the top destinations for new immigrants, new Chinese immigrants in particular, and my question is, how would, if elected, how would the candidates support programs, you know, such as legal services, housing, healthcare for new immigrants, and regardless of their status?
I'm curious, you mentioned regardless of their status. Is that, are you concerned about some of the talk and the debate right now surrounding not providing those kinds of legal services to certain undocumented people who have certain convictions in their past? Is that something that concerns you?
Well, that's, I guess, a bit more about the legal representation for those who are in deportation, and maybe they need a lawyer to go to immigration court. So, that too, but I'm also talking a little bit, so I think that's very important, you know, we would support, you know, representation for all regardless of their previous history because, well, yeah, criminal history is a very complicated thing, and even my misdemeanors can be seen as major offenses by immigration court, and you can actually be deported for it. So, but I'm talking more generally about services for all regardless whether they have a green card, or they're a new citizen, or if they don't have immigration papers at all, because they're all part of our, you know, community. They go to school, and they need that support, and they're not getting enough of it right now. Also, one size doesn't fit all, so, you know, we have a lot of great immigration legal service providers, and, you know, they have, but we need funding for more groups to go directly into the community in different places that they haven't been to before to reach these new immigrants. For example, in the Lower East Side, all of a sudden, some of the public housing tenant associations, they have a lot of immigration questions all of a sudden because of what's happening at the federal level, and, you know, they need help for their members.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Just tell us your name and your question.
Yeah. Hi, my name's Amanda. I'm also from the Mingqun Center. So, about a year ago, Mayor de Blasio declared New York a sanctuary city, a supposed safe haven for all immigrants, but the core principle of sanctuary cities is to protect immigrants from removal, and part of that protection is ensuring immigrants receive due process who are in the removal proceedings. So, de Blasio currently is putting strings attached to funding for immigrants who are facing deportation, who have criminal records. Immigrants regardless of status will not be provided a lawyer if they have a criminal record. Most of these records comprise of low-level offenses, which is like turnstile jumping and traffic violations, and also, many of them are from years, even decades ago. Also, Trump's executive order even makes it virtually any immigrant regardless of status or documentation a potential criminal. So, all immigrants, even undocumented immigrants, are protected by the Fifth Amendment and have the right to due process. Currently, all civil legal services in New York are not able to protect or defend undocumented immigrants because they are funded by the federal legal service corporations. So, that leaves a lot of the few nonprofit organizations that are criminal legal services with these cases to represent all undocumented immigrants. And then, now, they're also overwhelmed with these deportation cases, and they're already incredibly underfunded.
What's the question?
So, how would the mayoral candidates uphold the ideals of a sanctuary city and the Fifth Amendment guarantee of due process to ensure protection to all immigrants regardless of documentation, status, or criminal record?
Peter?
I think it's a fair question. I think it's something that is being grappled with City Hall about who gets offered this kind of money and who doesn't, and I think it's a fair question to pose.
I think it's one that'll also show a big difference between the mayor and his Republican opponent, because obviously, a lot of advocates are unhappy with the mayor's position on this issue, but his main opponent likely in the general election goes a lot further in the opposite direction, a direction that I know groups like yours won't be supportive of. So, it'll be interesting to see if Democratic voters and that base are, you know, able to sway the mayor at all when we get closer to the general elections. Thank you for your question.
Okay, so, the next person has a question.
I came broader from the Bronx.
What's your question?
I'd like, I'll get to it. I'd like to see to it that this is an unbiased process. So, in the questioning, I heard that you went to every borough with CBS, right, to get the questions from the population, and you did a public service announcement to make sure that candidates can be heard. I'll get to it. When that process is done, I'd like to see a representation of all communities, black and brown skin, any Asian, all population, right? And so, I didn't see that representation in the Bronx, because when you advertised it and then did the talk in the Bronx, our people of color wasn't predominantly, which we make up 68% of the population. We are the majority, and so, I don't believe we were represented in the Bronx, so maybe you should, could hold another public service announcement and do one in the Bronx to represent those four districts that get less than 5% voter output throughout the year for, when it comes to elections. But I'm a mayoral candidate, and I'm running on the Green Party, so I don't, I want to ask, how is it that we're getting across to everyone that there's more than just that demining name of primaries, or that demining title of primaries, and yet, there's more than two-party system? It's not just the Democrats and Republicans. We have independent party mayoral candidates and myself as a Green Party. So, where are we being represented is the question. Where are we, as a majority, going to start seeing from the mayoral candidates' answers? The lack, the thought that we shouldn't be getting resources cut in our communities because they don't want to represent our communities, because we stand up, and just because you weren't getting the votes from our communities, this year will be different. And so, you'll have majority of people wanting to ask, wanting their questions asked, and yet, if they're not being given, afforded the opportunity to ask these questions, where is the, where is the unbiased in this, in this debate going to be?
Well, what we're trying to do is to not only solicit questions in all five boroughs, but we're soliciting constantly questions that you can submit to our various social media websites, and we, we want to be all-inclusive of everybody in the city, and we welcome all of your input and all of your questions.
And the homeless?
If you don't get an opportunity to get your questions answered or logged in tonight, you can go to our website, or you can go to CBSNewYork.com.
That makes sense, yeah.
Because you want everybody to get to the Town Hall.
Except for those that cannot.
We want to make it—
Except for those that cannot access internet, which is, there's a huge population in New York that can't get to an internet. Those are called the homeless.
They can write to us. You can write to me.
They can write to you.
They can write to me at WCBS.
Right? If they, if they can get your information, they can write to you.
They can write to me. They can email me. They can call me. All you have to do is call CBS, they'll put you through to my line.
Because they, because homelessness has that opportunity.
Anybody, we welcome anybody's questions, all questions from all parts of the city, from every community.
So, here's my question, I'll ask for you guys to ask the candidates like myself. When it comes to criminal injustice in New York, what are we doing to see that it's equality justice and not justice for those that just can afford? Instead, I don't want to, just like all the other candidates, we don't want a generalized answer. We want a, we want a fact-based answer from these candidates, and if it's not, I wouldn't want to see an unbiased answer as a community that I'm bringing a lot of people to the table that represent the poor and black communities, black and brown-skinned communities across New York City. And we want our, we want to hear, we have our voices that want to be heard, and we want to make sure that we're heard.
So, you're looking for, let's say, an expansion of a public defender's office or equality—
No, they don't, they don't represent us. If they did, we wouldn't make a majority of the population in jail. We want to know where and be very precise.
So, you're looking for quality legal representation, is that correct?
No, no, because that just means that we'll still be going into the system of the Department of Corrections, getting used and abused and killed, like my brother Khalid Browder. That being said, that being said, we want to understand where our candidates, where our residents' money is going instead of the Department of Corrections to help, not just rehabilitation, but prevention methods like mentorship programs. We want to know what is out there for our people, preventative measures.
Okay. I see what you're saying, so that it doesn't happen in the first place, so that they don't require legal representation. So, you're looking for vocational, either like skills or job—
Mentorship programs, preventing, so where are they, where are they planning to invest their money, or our money, instead of taking these $144,215,000 yearly salaries and making way more than us, yet you're wanting to represent our communities? I want to know why they, also, whoever's elected in office, why would they settle for a payment so high, and yet, that's, that's hurting the communities because we are paying their salaries? Our senators, our mayors, governors, assemblymen, all of them make, and council members, all of them make at the very least $144,000 a year, and they're taking these high pay cuts in our, out of our money.
So, you'd rather see that money going into—
Absolutely.
—training programs.
When I become mayor, I'm, I want to do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you, as you pass the microphone to the next person, before we go to our next questioner, we have two questions from our social media partners. John Shin from Facebook says, can you help fix the MTA? That's the $64,000 question, isn't it? And Lou Fabrizio, also a Facebook participant, says, what does the candidate believe is the most socially significant contribution to New York City? Next, sir, who are you and what's your question?
Yes, my name is John. I'm from the Bronx. I want to ask tonight, if I can, twofold question. First, housing. I'm in the development of 114 homes in the Bronx, and we've had a lot of problems with just getting things fixed with HPD. I want to ask, is there a way that the mayor can actually help us to get communication? Like, we were supposed to have construction beginning in the spring. We've heard nothing. We've seen nothing. You call a number, and it's just a secretary that takes a message. There's nothing that comes from anything when we actually petitioned the correct authorities on this. So, I want to know, can the mayor help us at least to get a clear path? If not, getting things done, at least get...
Are you talking about 3-1-1? Is that where you're calling?
No, we, actually, the Office of HPD and the people in charge of directing where things are to begin. Those, I've actually gotten to that far, past 3-1-1.
Well, that's good.
But still, I stand before you today. Just some clarification, or at least to streamline the process for regular New Yorkers to get ahold of people in the higher positions that hold the purse strings in order to get things done, or at least communicate how and when they will.
And your second question?
My second question, it's a little less sexy, but it's something that affects us all. Transportation. So, this actually goes back to the Twitter question, but like, in the MTA, what are we going to do about the large capital projects? And will we be able to have a mayor that can actually help us with the east side access, which will bring commuter rail through the Bronx? Or rebuilding Penn Station? The lease on Madison Square Garden is up. If there was enough political pressure, perhaps we can even rebuild the train station that hundreds of thousands of people are there to, instead of scurrying around in the darkness, which is the worst thing, that was literally the thing that sparked the historical preservation movement in the city. We could rebuild the Penn Station, if possible, with enough political power. I want to know, what is the mayor's stance on rebuilding Penn Station and infrastructure projects, putting the pressure on the state and federal authorities in order to bring those fundings back to the city and help us on a day-to-day basis? Again, coming after yesterday with the accident, I mean, this is as much a pertinent question as ever. So, when will, what will the mayor do concerning transportation?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir, tell me who you are and what your question is.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Calvin Hunt. I was born in Harlem Hospital, October 16th, 1961. I was raised on 116th Street. And from a childhood, my grandmother was told me, "This is Harlem." And as I got older, through the years of the 90s, when things in Harlem were crack babies and crack, and mother hell saved a lot of babies, we don't ever talk about her too much, but when crack hit Harlem, I looked around my area, and it was black, going through a lot of changes, no white folks. Okay? Now, it's quite indigenous. It was so bad in real estate in Harlem that buildings were a dollar. That's why they looked at us at one time. Our buildings were a dollar. But my grandmother said, when she seen that, "This is still Harlem." Now, my question is, I want to ask all for you to ask the mayor, and to make sure that he get this from Calvin Hunt, that C-A-L-V-I-N-H-U-N-T, born and raised in Harlem, grandmother born on 116th Street in Harlem, not Soha. And I'm gonna tell you something. Hold on, hold on, listen, no, no, no. I listen, I listen to you intimately, and I watch you too. This is very serious.
I'll ask you.
People's lives involved. It's just like you go to Jerusalem telling you, "Hey, you gotta change Jerusalem." Or going to Africa, "Hey, you can't call this Africa no more." You can't tell me I can't call Harlem Harlem. You have the indigenous that come in here in our neighborhood after y'all put us through 400 years of slavery? You know what I'm talking about? We gonna keep this on a real list, baby. I'm not racist, I'm a realist. I can't be racist. I never heard of a black Ku Klux Klan yet, and I do a lot of history.
So, the question you want to ask is...
My question is, what can CBS, what can any of y'all do on this stage to help us teach these people what Harlem is about, and they can't come in here and talk about Soha and all this crap? You done did reports around the news channel, so you should be able to be a forefront of this thing here because it's a disgrace and a disgrace to the people of Harlem. And y'all come up here with this like everything is la di da. Everything is la di da. Ma'am, this, you wouldn't understand unless you was from here.
So, you want to stop them from...
I want to know why white folks is coming here doing all these crimes?
I want to as well.
That's it! Let's keep it straight, let's call the Spanish up. We ain't gonna water down nothing tonight. All right? Because it's serious people, people live, ninety-eight-year-old, "Oh, they gonna call this Soha." No, they not. No, they not.
So, you're afraid that it would what, change the identity?
The identity changed when Whole Foods came to 125th Street. You have the audacity to put a Whole Foods when people on the supermarket trying to get some food? So, you sit up there like everything is going on, you're right here in Harlem. When I heard y'all gonna be at the Shonberg, I said, "I gotta come down here." Because I watch CBS, it's a good news station. But let's say they put out the truth about what's going on with white folks trying to take over Harlem. Let's make that some full fun news for the day. Let's get a caption on that. Let's make that fuck page with Bill de Blasio. All right? How y'all just came in here, destroyed everything, put your little star, it started with Starbucks, then the Whole Foods, and once I seen Bay Baffiar, I said, "Here they come." And that's how, well, the question is, what can you do on that stage on CBS to get the word out that how these people are coming in our neighborhoods talking about they want to change the history of my, where I was born and raised at? What can you do, CBS?
So, you also want to stop gentrification?
Stop it? Oh, my God, man, that is not some system of gentrification. You know what that was? It was slavery back 400 years ago. You know what I'm saying? You know where you come from, you know where I come from. Ain't no secrets held here tonight. And like, let's go sit in here like we all even playing field, just thinking your white minds right now, 400 years of slavery. If y'all wanted to dig that to my people, and then you have the indigenous that come in our neighborhoods talking about, "This is Soha. This is Soha, much of bullshit. This is Harlem." And you go back and tell everyone you gotta tell, "Bill de Blasio, Mayor Quinones, you're not gonna call it what you want to call." There'll be a lot of problems here in Harlem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, come on forward so we can see you and hear you, and tell us your name and what your question is.
Okay, good evening. My name is Amma, and I live in Harlem. And my question is, what can the mayoral, well, I'm gonna tell you guys a little bit, right? So, me and my friends that live in Harlem, we're the teachers, we're the social workers, we're the lawyers giving free legal advice to our community to make it better. I've seen four of my friends get pushed out to the point that they had to go out of state. Gentrification was knocking on my door because a condo replaced the fish market. So, now my neighbors were scared. So, what can the mayoral candidates tell young people who want to make this city a better place, but who can't afford to stay here? So, what can, what can they do to help young people, to motivate us to keep making this city better when we can't afford to live here? Okay?
That's a great question. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Willie Mae Lewis.
Hi, Willie Mae.
And I live in NYCHA Housing. As a matter of fact, I live in St. Nicholas Houses. My question is, although we know that NYCHA is in a deficit, I'm a former board member there, and I really know the problem. However, the mayor had promised, whomever the candidates are, but the mayor de Blasio had promised, because we have a lot of repairs that need to be done in NYCHA, and New York City is the world of NYCHA for public housing. And the thing is, he had said initially, he was gonna pledge $1 billion for roofing, and I hope that that will still play out, you know? And my other question is, although we needed the money back from sanitation, but the garbage is horrible. The garbage is all over the place, you know? And I would really like to see that they reinstate the sanitation to pick up the garbage on a more frequent basis, because when you don't, with summertime coming, you're gonna have the rodents, you're gonna have the roaches and all of that. So, my question, hopefully, that whomever the candidates are, that they will look into public housing, because we do house the homeless, we do house veterans and all of that. But we also have people that work, you know, because I'm a retiree from the Board of Education. I pay taxes, just like everybody else, you know? So, we'd like to see some of that money come back to us for the repairs, because everybody is a lot of welfare that live in public housing.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, next. Ma'am?
I just, Willie Mae, could I just ask you a question? So, you think city services, city services are the problem? You've seen a decline in city services?
Yes.
And specifically trash picking?
Has the schedule changed, the garbage schedule changed? How has it changed?
Well, what happens now, they have the housing employees that come around and pick up the garbage, and then they have the place where we have, on 8th Avenue, where we have the compacters. However, when sanitation was picking up, they picked it up at least twice a week. So, now you have, because we don't have a lot of space for all of the garbage that we have now, so that's a problem. So, you know, even though we needed the money back, the $100,000 or whatever they were paying to the sanitation department, but it's creating another problem. And even like when I was saying about the roofing, you have a lot of seniors and young children that suffer from asthma. So, that roofing really needs to be addressed. And we really need the garbage to be reinstated because it's just too much, and we can't handle it, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, she gave me a good segue into my first comment, and that, well, my name's Laura, and I'm a resident, I live in Manhattan, in the downtown area. And I feel like throngs of people come through my neighborhood, and they leave their garbage everywhere because there are not enough garbage cans. And I walk around, and there's like piles and piles of garbage on, after a weekend in my neighborhood. And I don't know how people live in their own homes, but maybe we need to have them actually separate their garbage as they're tossing it out on the street. Maybe there should be a recycle, you know, or a paper, a food, and other, or...
So, you'd like to estimate if they would install recycling bins on street corners?
Yeah, they have some in some parks, I've noticed, they have these ones that are solar-powered, and they're compressors. I mean, there's so much garbage, and, you know, maybe we'll save money on street cleaning if we actually have garbage cans for people.
Do you see more tourism in your neighborhood?
Well, I live, you know, in the West Village, and no, I haven't noticed any change in tourism, but most cities that I go to across the world are much cleaner than ours. I actually think that it's cleaner up here than it is in the West Village. It's disgusting. I was saying to my friends outside, so I'm like...
So, city services?
I'm like, why do I have to live in a garbage can? Because there's not enough garbage cans.
Right. And there are some neighborhoods that do have recycling, they've got glasses and cans, they've got paper, and they've got trash.
I mean, there should be a day when they pick up electronics. There should be, you know, I mean, batteries, cartridges, cables, you know? Or, you know, some sort of a, maybe a donation plan for older equipment, something. I mean, I tend to be more frugal, but I see like what people throw out in my building, and I'm like, you know, somebody could use that.
Right. So, you think there could be more coordination or a little more outreach by Department of Sanitation and more coordination for pickup? And more often?
More cans and, you know, or...
And maybe more receptacles.
Yeah.
I mean, I think sometimes like at the green market, like once every six months, there's an electronics. We live in shoeboxes, and we're supposed to hold our old electronics to then maybe drop them off, schlep them ourselves, something big and heavy, if it is, across the city to this like one spot that, I mean, I don't think anyone wants to live like that, but, so we need your help and not to live like that. And then, my other comment is on immigration. I'm a New York citizen, but I've been reading these hellacious articles about families and kids getting ripped out of wherever. And my, it costs like $20,000 to deport somebody. Some people don't even make that in a year. So, we have parole programs for criminals, why can't we have a parole program? There's gotta be some in-between. It can't be just black and white. I mean, and even, they send back people that are contributing to their community, that have created jobs, I read, that a student that has two jobs of his own, sending these kinds of people back. You know, everybody makes mistakes, right? They do their penance, and they've done their penance. So, I think that, you know, there has to be some, there has to be a thought process given to, well, can we put this person on a parole program?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as you pass the microphone, I'm gonna read two questions from, another two from our social media partners. Dan Doherty says, "When will New York City enforce the laws already on the books?" And Michelle Laska says, "I'm concerned about the MTA. Something needs to be done about it. Almost every day or week, something happens on the subway. We need something to be done about it, and raising fares is not the answer." How many here agree with that? Sir, your question and your name.
Hello, my name is Derek. I have some questions about education. As you know, this week, the Assembly is considering mayoral control of New York City's schools.
Yes, they are.
We know the positives of that as well as the negatives, and one question I would have for the mayoral candidates is their opinion on that, how they could use that to help our schools, to help us with funding and all of those things. And just generally, I see education as a way to ameliorate many of the issues that have been brought up today. And I want to know how the mayoral candidates will use education as a tool to help people, how we can train people for jobs that might not even exist yet, how we can, while it's becoming more and more necessary for a college education, that's not the right path for everyone, and what will our city do to help those people who are not academically inclined but are more than capable of working hard and improving our city? So, I would love to know what the mayoral candidates think about that.
I'm just curious, how do you feel about mayoral control?
Well, I can't talk too much about it, but I do think that there are certainly positives to it. The New York City public school system is the largest in the country. It's truly mind-boggling when you really start thinking about it. But I think it goes back to what was said about the rent regulation laws. I mean, New York City is a force to be reckoned with. We know our problems better than anyone else would, both in Albany and in DC. And I think that there is a way for New York City to take care of itself in that way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to point out that we have only about 10 minutes left, so if you have a question, please come to the microphone, because we don't want to leave anybody out who has a question.
We actually have a gentleman in the back here who can't get down, so I'm gonna bring the mic up to him, he's gonna ask a question.
Thank you.
Sir, your question.
First of all, I want to tell you, my name is Davey White. I'm 77, I'm the Harlem Hospital baby, I'm originally Black Panther before Oakland. I want to say to you, 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 as people, everybody's talking about sanctuary cities, about immigrants, LBG, but nobody talks about the descendants of American slaves who built this country. All right? If in fact, you took away everything that American slaves and their descendants built, you wouldn't have, you would have no cell phone, no light bulb, refrigerator, traffic light gas, mess, fire extinguisher. I have 1,881 inventions come out this library. I saw them coming to this library in 1946. My question is, why are you overrunning the descendants of American slaves with news, books, and every other part of the media?
Okay, thank you very much. And Peter, I know we have a couple more questions down here.
10-minute warning.
I think we have... Ma'am, your name and your question.
So, my name is Jasmine Dennis. I'm currently a housing coordinator with the city. As one working within the Low Income Housing Tax Credit, formerly the 421A Tax Credit, how can we actually make that for low-income individuals? That's more of the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know there's a couple more people, we want to try to get in as many questions as possible. Ma'am, your name and your question.
Yes, good evening. My name is Jacqueline Chalery. Technically, I'm a New York City Department of Ed teacher for more than 27 years. However, I'm not working. Why? Because I've been injured on the job. And I need to find out from the mayor, the present mayor, and the mayoral candidates and others running for office, what are they really doing to help teachers? You know, teachers have a lot of responsibilities. We are in control of the minds of our students, and we inspire our students, but we are not treated right. Teachers have what you call line-of-duty injury. My last injury was two years ago on a school bus, and the audacity of my superintendent in District 18 to question, but she has a very biased, very, very biased opinion of what took place on the school bus that caused me to have had surgery and a metal piece. She's the same superintendent who allowed the principal of Piers 235 to discriminate against my daughter, who is a level 4... to discriminate against my daughter, who is a Level Four student and all A student, but she cannot attend public school because they refuse to fully accommodate her for her food allergy, especially to fish. All they had to do was put up signs by the door, because she cannot be around it. It's a matter of life and death.
Can you ask her to get a special meal from the cafeteria?
No, not meals. I could do that on my own. But she cannot be in the school when they're serving fish. So just like Berkeley Carol has up signs stating you cannot bring peanuts, you cannot bring shrimp, et cetera, for their students whose parents pay forty thousand dollars a year, why can't the Department of Ed fully accommodate my child, who has done everything required of her? She's an avid reader, she's there, well, she was there reading, now I guess she's trying to film, but, to videotape, but she has done everything in her power to be a good student, a good child, a good citizen. And then her mommy, who worked hard to inspire her students, has been injured on the job more than once in the past seven years. And the Department of Education, and I hold the Chancellor accountable too, and the Panel for Education Policy Committee, because they chose not to do anything about the problem, they have floored me. Our home, family home is in foreclosure, everything else. We are an inch away from being homeless. This is the reality that teachers go through. And please, tell them, don't tell us to wait on a union. The bureaucracy is atrocious, okay? We, we have presented, my daughter and I, our case to the Chancellor of the City of New York. And we've had empathy, even from Letitia James and others. But guess what? No one does anything. So it's a challenge that I'm putting forward to all of the candidates. If you say that you care about the children in the City of New York, then what are you really doing? Are you gonna hurt the very teachers who are out there fighting for them? And yes, there are many teachers on the battleground fighting for their students. So you should be ashamed when you hear of instances where teachers are being fought by the City Law Department. The same money that they paid in taxes is now being used against them when they're injured on the job. I haven't been paid in more than two years. I'm not the only story out there. The Panel for Education Policy Committee, they're not addressing this. The union, I don't know if they're bogged down with a lot of issues, but nothing's happening. So what are you going to do for your teachers? And when I say teachers, I mean people working at the Department of Ed under line of duty pretenses.
Thank you very much for your question.
Thank you.
And I think there are a couple, a few more people who want to get to the microphone before we run out of time. Sir?
Hello, panel. Mr. Robinson, right here, Harlem resident. I'm a jazz musician, she's a jazz singer. And I just want to say about the, the gentrification is basically destroying the, the culture, the culture here. There's nothing wrong with gentrification, but like we say, whole food means whole check. Okay? And, and, and the last vestige I want to say, last thing I want to say is about Republic Care. Republic Care will get passed, and inadvertently, a lot of people are gonna get hurt, especially the big cities, the major cities, and minorities. So my question to the mayor, not just the mayor, we're a democratic town. And, and I hate to say this, but just like the democratic, the Democrats, there was an election they had down south, I think Georgia. They, they narrowly lost, and they called it a win. And I think they have, they have to come up with something better than that. So my question is, what is he gonna do for all the people that are gonna be, not just unemployed, we're not gonna have any health care? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that the gentleman right there in the white shirt had came down. We have just a few more minutes, and I know we want to hear what you have to say.
Yes, good evening. My name is Eddie Questor, and I am the executive director for an organization, Dominicanos USA. We have been for the last three years, we conducting voter registration, civic education. We have been able to register more than a hundred thousand in the last three years, working at schools with other partners, doing student voter registration there, which is very important. There's very little money that has been allocated for this program, which is a very important program. I hope that this question could be provided to the candidates, where they could really teach civic education. We have a young population, and we see the needs that many of these young people have in terms of really building up to becoming part of this fabric of America embodied. The other is that there is not sufficient funding that is going towards our youth in terms of the summer youth program. This should be a program that should be yearly, all year long, because there are a lot of students that really needs this support. So I hope, you know, within your question to the mayor, funding could be allocated towards our youth.
Where do you get more of your funding now? From city, state?
No, we don't, we have not received a single penny from, from, from the federal government, state government. This has been contribution from Dominican Americans, business people, that are investing in our community. But we're not only limited to working with Dominican Americans, we work with everyone that we come across in the city. And this is a very important problem that we have. And I think some of the elected officials that will be running or the candidates should look at, you know, how we could modernize our voting system. Because I know it's a state matter, but at least, you know, the city could be very instrumental in terms of, you know, supporting, you know, online voter registration and same-day voting. Because it's, you know, we have a mess here in the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for participating tonight, and for a very spirited discussion and spirited participation. And in addition to thanking you, we'd like to thank all of the viewers who have been watching live on Facebook and following us on Twitter. Our final town hall meeting will take place tomorrow on Staten Island, at the College of Staten Island. That's at twenty-eight hundred Victory Boulevard. It's from seven to eight o'clock PM, just as this one was. Excuse me? Now you can register to participate on our website at CBSNewYork.com. If you're unable to attend, join us live on Facebook and Twitter, and continue to share with us your questions and comments on our social media platforms. You can stay up to date with voting and elections. And if you'd like to receive election alerts on your phone, text NYC VOTE. That's N-Y-C-V-O-T-E-S to nine-one-seven-nine-seven-nine-six-three-seven-seven. Again, that's nine-one-seven-nine-seven-nine-six-three-seven-seven. And I'd like to tell you that if you have any questions that have not been asked, and you'd like to ask them, you can also contact us at CBS New York. Thank you all again, and thanks for coming, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.